Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Kane.
Here.
Hoyer.
Here.
Finnegan.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Here.
Olson.
Okay, we're going to begin this evening with recognition of District 88 successes. The first one is the recognition of the District 88 Foundation Pickleball Event. I'm going to turn over on Jim Taylor. Wherever you want to do, whatever's easiest for you.
Thank you. On March 1st, we held our pickleball tournament, which raises funds for the District 88 Foundation, and we had a lot of community support, so we wanted to honor them. So first up is Addison Youth Sports.
Heims, Petrka, Infester.
Eva Rodriguez.
If I missed anybody, let me know. Do you want their picture?
Did we miss anybody from pickleball?
Who helped out at the pickleball tournament?
And if anybody wanted to say a few words, you are more than welcome.
Well, I'm an attorney, so I always say words. I just want to say I really enjoy working with your district. Your school professionals are very student-centered and work hard, and I'm sure that the board and foundation will have continued success.
My name is Missy Gillis, and I'm here on behalf of Elmhurst University, and I just want to thank you for our enduring relationship that we have with District 88. I'm a proud alum of Elmhurst, and I'm kind of returning back to my alma mater after retiring from being a Director of Admissions, back to Elmhurst. And my niece and nephew went to Willowbrook, so thank you.
Just want to thank D88 for the recognition today. We're very proud of what you did. Our kids went through Addison Trail, nothing against Willowbrook, but we do thank you guys for the support that you gave them and the great education they got from D88, all in all. Thank you.
All right, if you don't mind, could you go by the banner? We'll take just a quick photo. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have recognize 88's Best. Each month, we recognize a student from each of the high schools who's been nominated by the staff regarding their achievements, and so we'll start this evening with Willowbrook High School.
Thank you so much. Willowbrook is honored to introduce Nina Young as this month's recipient of 88's Best. Nina is no stranger to the Board of Education, as many of her pieces of art have been on display here in the boardroom, but also were recently donated as part of one of the foundation events this past fall, and had multiple individuals bidding on her pieces, including our minister, one of our newest administrators who has a piece in his office, that we always refer to Nina and her piece of art as a Nina Young, because we know that she is going to be that famous in terms of her art and her skills and talents. But as an individual and as a student, she's a leader amongst our senior class, and I just want to highlight a couple of the compliments that the staff has shared about Nina. The first comes from Mr. John Apple, our Department Head for Art. He says Nina Young has been one of those "on one hand" kind of art students for the past four years, meaning after 28 years, I can put her up with the best of the best and fit them all on only one hand. Nina has received numerous awards for her art, including Best of Show at our annual spring art show. She's had her work on display and received awards at the state level Art Educators Exhibit at the Bridgeport Art Center. She has two on display there right now. She's participated in the state live art throwdown competitions, go out of her way to set up and take down art shows at the Funky Java here at Willowbrook. She volunteers to represent her department at the Curriculum Showcase. She's donated artwork for the District 88 Foundation. Designs have been selected for publications for our Senior Recognition Assembly and the commencement programs, so she's the one who designs the covers. And we were just talking downstairs briefly before the meeting about how exciting it's going to be for her to potentially design the cover for her own senior recognition ceremony and commencement ceremony for the class of 2025. She'll often assist peers in a studio, is exceptionally thoughtful and generous with peers during peer shares and critiques, and she even brings up non-art student friends on their lunch to introduce them to the Potter's Wheel. Congratulations on a well-deserved honor, Nina. Science teacher and activity sponsor Eastman Two adds, "Over the last two years as the Asian Student in Action Club President, Nina has tripled the membership and takes extreme care to be sure everyone is included and heard. Under her leadership, we have had successful fundraisers, decorated hallways for Lunar New Year, donated gifts to children in need during the holidays, and participated in Feed My Starving Children events. At each meeting, Nina's level of preparedness continuously impresses and exceeds expectations of the outcomes of each session. She has the respect of her peers and teachers, but does not rest on her laurels and strives to show herself worthy of that esteem on a daily basis." Mr. Montgomery, your social studies teacher, from he had you for U.S. History: American Mosaic, said that during your sophomore years, you were an excellent all-around student. You write well, you think creatively, and an active participant in discussions. And not surprisingly, where you shined most was when you had the opportunity to demonstrate your learning by taking it from the verbal to the visual. Every time part of an activity or assignment was to include pictures or create an image that explains a concept, that your work was amazing. He even continues to use your model examples when he gives the assignments today. He wants to say you are absolutely one of Willowbrook and District 88's best. And finally, Art Department Chair at Addison Trail, Ms. Lenny Ciana says, "A huge congratulations to my former student Nina Young. She is more than an outstanding student. She is a wildly talented artist, a deep thinker, and a fabulous organizer and leader. She won Best of Show three years in a row at the annual art show and countless other art-related awards. Her work and vision as both junior editor and senior editor of the yearbook highlight both her ability to lead and her maturity in dealing with light, with tight deadlines and stressful situations. I feel so privileged to have taught such an outstanding young person. It was such a delight to have her in my classes in the yearbook club. I have no doubt that Nina will do great things in the future and make all warriors proud." Congratulations, Nina. So as a student, Nina pursues the most rigorous classes. She'll have completed seven advanced placement courses as well as multiple honors, project lead the way, college credit earning, dual credit and online courses by the time she graduates. She's an AP Scholar with Distinction, an Illinois State Scholar. She's been in the distinct honor role each semester of her high school career. She's an inductee to the National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and Civitas, our Social Studies Honor Society. She's been recognized with the Human Relations Award, the Outstanding Student for the Art Department, the District 88 Scholarship for the past three years, and has been, as you heard, Best of Show at our annual art show. Beyond the classroom, as it was heard, she is a founding member of our Asian Students in Action Club and serves as president. She's a four-year member of our yearbook staff. She's the editor-in-chief this year, and she's designed the cover for the past two years. She's also an active member of Student Council Econ Challenge. She earned her Quill and Scroll because of her outstanding work on the yearbook as a teacher assistant in her free time in the art department. Her service to Willowbrook continues highlighted by the face painting she does for the annual West Bourbon Conference Sports Spectacular that we're going to be hosting in late April again, demonstrating her artistic talents at Curriculum Showcase. She's always on the Potter's Wheel, demonstrating for the incoming ninth graders, and then a student-led mural that she helped contribute to during her sophomore year. Next year, she's finalizing her plans to include opportunities to potentially attend Rhode Island School of Design, Savannah College of Art and Design, and the University of Illinois. She plans to study graphic design or advertising and branding and potentially minor in a business-related field. Nina, your potential is endless. You are going to do amazing things, and we can't wait to say that we knew Nina Young before everybody else was paying to have a Nina Young. So congratulations on all the great work you've done and certainly on being recognized as District 88's Best.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's on. I want to say thank you to the Board of Education. I've been granted so many good opportunities at Willowbrook, both on like an artistic standpoint and an educational. I've grown so much as a leader and as a student here, and I'm just so grateful for all the resources that we have at our district. The Potter's Wheels, like access to Adobe Illustrator, and all these things are so amazing, and it goes so much beyond that. I want to thank all the teachers that said really nice things about me. It's really nice to hear those things. I know I said it earlier, but I want to thank Mr. Apple and Ms. Cianus and Mr. Two. They've all had really impactful, they've just been really amazing to me, and they've really changed who I am as a person and as a leader. I want to thank my parents for always supporting me. I feel like they put a lot of trust in me, and they don't harp on me because they know that I'm very capable, and I really appreciate that. And yeah, I'm just so grateful for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Okay. Nope, you're not done yet.
Oh.
Go back up to the mic room. That's okay.
Oh, question time.
I didn't get a chance to practice this part of it, you know. I totally understand. So congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education. So you already answered my question. I'm going to open up to the other board to, if they want to ask a question.
Congratulations, Nina.
Thank you.
My question is, what advice would you give to an incoming freshman to help them kind of successfully navigate the high school atmosphere?
I would tell a freshman to say yes to every opportunity that they're granted. So many of the amazing experiences I've had at Willowbrook was just saying yes to something I didn't really know I was getting myself into, but I still worked it out, and it taught me a lot of amazing experiences and let me meet a bunch of amazing people. And to just get involved, there's so many amazing clubs as well, and just, yeah, just say yes. So, yeah.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
Congratulations again, Nina. What was one thing you did at Willowbrook that you didn't think you would do when you started out as a freshman?
Mr. Kraus, Dr. Kraus, sorry, mentioned it, but the mural and the face painting, I've never painted on a wall, and I've never painted on someone else's face. So doing face painting at the Sports Spectacular for the past two years has been a super fun experience. I never really get that much interaction with the special ed kids, so it's just super fun to meet all of them. And painting 100-plus faces is definitely a hard task, but it's fun to paint people as Spider-Man. And painting the mural on the second floor was just a really good experience on how to think bigger and just really helped my workflow and taught me a bunch, and they were both things I didn't think I'd be doing at Willowbrook.
Well, thank you and congratulations, and we're looking forward to seeing more of your art and wish you the best luck, and I'm sure we'll see you back here again. Thank you.
Thanks.
And now we'll move on to AT.
All right. Addison Trail is honored to recognize Nathan Redman as this month's recipient of 88's Nathan is also no stranger to the Board of Education, but definitely not a stranger to the spotlight, not one that he seeks. And even when, you know, we kind of told him he received this award, he was kind of like, why? And Nathan, we're going to talk about why, and we're going to start with some staff comments who really kind of give us some strong examples of that why. So Ms. Carolyn Erwin, AP Biology teacher. Nathan is a student who is driven by his curiosity and intuition, which are two traits that allow him to excel in every one of his endeavors. His insightful contributions to class discussions in AP Bio add depth and context, which in turn make our discussions much more interesting. It thrills me to know that he sees biology in his mind's eye because he is then able to understand the subtle intricacies of this subject. I would venture that his curiosity and intuition also drives his creativity and empathy, which are also evident in his acting and other creative outlets. He is an extraordinary student who is sure to experience continued success after high school. Mr. Shader, Blazer News sponsor, shares, "Nathan has been the Blazer weatherman for the past three years. He is an amazing weatherman and a great kid. You can always count on Nathan to bring a unique point of view to any topic we discuss. It is going to be impossible to replace him after this year. He has set the bar high, very high, for everyone who follows him in the future." Ms. McSweeney, theater sponsor and your teacher, expressed, "Nathan is one of the smartest actors she's ever worked with. He is dedicated, communicative, and creative. This year, he helped launch the first-ever IHSA student film as a writer and director. I'll never forget his audition freshman year for Mamma Mia when he kindly approached Sesko and Ms. McSweeney and said, 'I'm sorry, but this isn't for me.' I'm so glad he stayed and made his home in AT Theater. His ability to dissect a script will be missed." Ms. Collarin, Food for Life teacher, shared that Nathan is such a kind guy and always curious and outgoing. He is always respectful and eager to interact with others. Nathan always comes to Food for Life and shows his culinary creations from home. He goes above and beyond and definitely deserves this award." And finally, Mr. Jeff Nellison, choir teacher. Nathan Redman is by far one of the most mature and hard-working students I have ever encountered. Since his freshman year in choir and theater, Nathan would take a very scientific and methodical approach towards improving himself as a performer. Where most of his peers would be complacent with the progress they have made so far, Nathan would always have a very specific question about vocal technique or even music theory. Nathan knows what he is good at, but he also knows how to push himself. I'm so proud of everything he has accomplished and so excited to see him succeed after high school as well. I'm not going to attempt it, but he says, "In the AT weatherman voice, good job, Nathan." Maybe you could show us later. As you can see, I mean, everything from AP courses to your time in theater and choir to Food for Life classes, which we'll talk about some food-related things here in a second as well. Nathan has been involved in a number of different things at Addison Trail. Beyond that involvement as well, he has taken 12 advanced placement courses, nine honors courses. He is a member of the National Honor Society. As you heard, he is a part of theater, where you may have seen him as Victor Velasco in Barefoot in the Park, or Chris, the play that goes wrong, or Elwood P. Dowd in Harvey. I won't go on and on, but he's been in quite a few major roles at Addison Trail and has definitely left his legacy on the stage. He has been a part of Shades of Blue Science Club, Blazer News, as you heard about, Philosophy Club, eSports, Art Club, Debate Club, Student Council. He serves as a member of the principal advisory, as well as a very active member, I would say, on the superintendent advisory, who may have some direct responsibility for the food service provider that was selected this year. So even some cheers in the back. You're getting cheers back there, Nathan. But definitely have taken a role on that superintendent advisory committee. Outside of school, you may even see him as a cashier at Portillo. Somehow, he finds the time to do that. He did reflect on one of his, you know, favorite volunteer opportunities, which was the Park Pride Cleanup Day that he participated for National Honor Society. Nathan has been awarded Most Improved Freshman Award for Choir, Outstanding Sophomore Award for Choir, Outstanding Junior Award for Choir. I feel like there's a trend there. AP Scholar with Distinction on several advanced placement tests. He is an Illinois State Scholar, and he is a state-recognized thespian for the IHSA Musical Theater Review, where the team placed sixth. Nathan plans to attend Iowa State to major in environmental engineering, specifically with a focus on water purification. Nathan, that is the why. There's so much more, you know, to this why as well, but just really thank you for everything that you have done at Addison Trail. You will definitely be missed on the stage, you'll be missed in the classroom, you'll be missed in every place that you touch at Addison Trail. We still got you for a few more months, but again, thank you and congratulations on being this month's recipient of 88's Best.
Good evening, everyone. Just for context, that is my weatherman voice. Hello. Thank you all so much. I am so grateful to have received this award. I'd like to start out by giving a special thanks to my family for encouraging me to pursue all of these clubs and activities for theater and choir and just sticking with it, seeing it through, and really being able to come around to understanding the value of all and each and every one of these clubs that I can be a part of here. I'd also like to thank my teachers for their support in my creative outlets, and finally to my school and district administration for their attentiveness and support of artistic expression, whether that be in traditional art, culinary art, choral art, and of course, the performing arts. So to keep it brief, theater has been one of the most positive influences on my life. It has strengthened my memorization, improvisation, and problem-solving as a whole, and has given me a group of amazing friends that I cherish every day. Even though I plan to enter into an engineering field, theater and the performing arts still has been a powerful tool that I will continue to use in my life. From communicating as a team to designing and constructing complex moving sets on a time crunch, theatrical skills can be applied to so many fields that I don't think many people really think about. And that's not even getting into the power of working together to perform live on stage. There's something so magical about having no redos. The song you sing or the scene you act out is the culmination of the work you put into it. And while it's stressful in the moment, being pushed to work with what you have and to give it your all is such a powerful feeling. Those moments of singing or acting on stage with all my friends, it still sticks with me in a way that very few other experiences have, and I'm honored to have had the opportunity to live through all those moments. Thank you again to all of you who have supported performers in singing, acting, dancing, or in the case of our musicals, all three.
So on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to say congratulations. So I'm going to ask you a question we didn't ask downstairs because I just find very interesting from the theater aspect that you want to go into environmental engineering. How did you choose that?
Well, for me, I think the crew side of it really opened my eyes. I've always loved the cast side infinitely, but just being able to construct those sets and design things and see how it all comes together is just so fascinating to me, and it also ties into some more of my passions outside of school, whether that be biking or hiking or being able to just explore nature. That's another thing I really enjoy, so I feel like it's kind of combining those aspects. And I do think with theater, there is a huge communication aspect and teamwork aspect. Like building the show and having the script lines interact with each other is a lot, in my mind, is a lot like having the components of a machine work together. It really does feel like the culmination of all the work you put into it, and I think with engineering, I'll be able to work in a group where I can design systems that really feel true to the work that we've put in.
Thank you. Anything else? I think you've left the board speechless at this point. Well, congratulations. This, I'm going to ask both 88's Best to come on forward. I have some things to present to you.
Yeah, with parents, yeah.
The parents cannot come up too. There's a lot of things, so it makes it easier for carrying things. That's why I don't bring it out there, because it'd be hard to carry it all. Okay. So first of all, we have a certificate that declares you as one of 88's Best. Okay, you're going to get lots of those this year. That's up for you. And then we have a gift certificate to anyway, so you can treat your favorite parents. And then we have Momento here that's been created specifically for 88's Best. And one of the reasons why you have the parents come up is it's kind of hard to carry all these things, so mom, relax. And congratulations to you as well.
I can't.
Yeah, okay. Congratulations to all of you. If you want to hang out a little bit more, we have a few other recognitions, then we're going to take a short break. So thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the state level of recognition. I'm going to turn over to the principals.
All right. I think Dr. Kraus and I are going to go back and forth here a little bit, but before we kick it off, we always love when there's a full room. It means that we get a chance to recognize students, not only 88's Best, business partners and all that, but those who have, you know, earned and put in the time and effort to really receive one of those top state-level recognitions. We know that we're going to hear a little bit of each of your stories today, and we won't have time for, you know, the whole in-depth part of the story. Some of you are early on in your career, some of you have been working towards the state-level recognitions for quite some time, but we're excited to hear kind of from your different sponsors as well as coaches who will have a chance to introduce you. So how it'll work, we'll call you up to the podium with your coach or sponsor. They're going to introduce you and share a little bit about either the team or you as an individual, and then you guys are going to go over to the board to take a picture. Ms. Brink, I'll take that picture. All right, so we'll go ahead and jump in. Addison Trail is going to start off with athletics, which tonight I'm going to ask Coach Rosen Grant to come up and present Nicholas Duarte.
First of all, thanks to the school board for having us, and thanks for the administration at AT for supporting everything that we do athletically. I also want to thank Nico's mom and dad, Martin and Brenda, for coming tonight and for all their trust in us, their continued support, and... And yeah, this guy was being recruited by all the public, all the private schools in the area, and they put a lot of trust and faith into us, and I really wanted to highlight that and just say we really appreciate you and everything you do. So Nico made history this year. What does it take to be an athlete who makes history, to accomplish something in their sport that hasn't been done before at Addison Trail? We don't have to look too far. We have to, we could just look at Nico Duarte. As a freshman, Nico didn't just step on the mat, he dominated it. He became the first freshman All-State athlete in Addison Trail history this year. He had a record of 37 and 8. He had All-Conference honors, and he finished a season at the state championships with a fourth-place finish. He led our team in every statistical, meaningful statistical category, wins, win percentage, team points, takedowns, and again, just proving that he was one of the very best. But his journey was not easy. First of all, the state tournament in Illinois is one of the toughest state tournaments in the country. Illinois wrestling is like Texas football. Really is. And his state finals tournament started with kind of a nightmare situation. He got injured in his first match and had to injury default, right, against an opponent he thought he would certainly beat. And when we came off the mat, we didn't know if that was the end of his season or not. You know, the trainers wanted to evaluate him the next morning, and so a whole night went by where we didn't know if his season was over. Well, they looked at him in the morning, he got the clear to continue wrestling in the tournament, and then he returned to the mat, having to face the number four-ranked wrestler in the state, and then the number five-ranked wrestler in the state on his way to finishing All-State. Okay, that takes more than skill. That takes heart, toughness, the mindset of a champion. And that's truly what separates Nico. He isn't just an ordinary high achiever. He doesn't push himself just a little bit. He pushes himself to the absolute best. His goals just aren't just about winning, about winning locally. He wants to be at the absolute pinnacle. You know, he just thinks really differently. You know, if you want to know what all-in looks like, you can look at his daily schedule. During the season, he's training two to three times a day, not because anyone else is pushing him to do this. This is like really what he wants so bad that he's willing to do anything he can do to go get it. He's doing strength and conditioning at six in the morning, three to four days a week with Coach Matello. He's practicing with the team, you know, and all those demands, right, practices, competitions with our team. And then three to four days a week, he's training with an elite club at night after practice. And his commitment doesn't stop on the season ends. He trains year-round in wrestling, all over the United States, wrestling in elite-level tournaments. Last summer, he represented the state of Illinois at really prestigious national duels, the USA Wrestling National Duels in Pennsylvania, competing against some of the best wrestlers in the state. This isn't normal, what he's doing, this kind of commitment. This is the type of commitment it takes to be extraordinary. Nico wants to be the very best. When we were at University of Illinois, I'll never forget, you know, we were getting a practice in before competition in U of I's training room, and I asked him, "Hey, what do you think? You know, look around, it's really a cool environment, all the U of I banners are on the wall, their champions are on the wall." And I said, "What do you think? Could you see yourself, you know, going here someday and wrestling for U of I?" And without hesitation, he goes, "No, I'm going to wrestle at Iowa." You know, and for those of you who don't know, Iowa is widely considered the best program in the country. You know, and that's just, that response says everything about him. He expects more from himself than most people. His goals are extraordinary. All right, there were moments this season when Nico was tested, he faced tough opponents, he battled adversity, he proved time and time again, he belongs with the best. He never backs down, he rises up, he really lives for those big moments. And the most exciting part is, he's just a freshman. You know, he has a lot. This is just the beginning of something special. Years from now, we won't just remember what he did as a freshman, but we're going to remember a whole career of just accomplishments, high-level accomplishments. So Nico, congrats on an incredible freshman season. You've raised the bar for the program, and we can't wait to see what's next.
Congratulations, Nico. That's awesome. We're going to, we have two quick recognitions. The first, unfortunately, Malaki Henigan cannot be here tonight. He is rehearsing for the All-State production that will be competing Friday night. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But I did have something from Mr. Hernandez, our choir director, that I want to be sure that I read on Malaki's behalf. Malaki Henigan has achieved an outstanding musical accomplishment by representing Willowbrook High School at the prestigious Illinois Music Education Association All-State Festival. He was selected as the top bass in District Nine, an incredible honor, considering he was chosen from a pool of over 900 talented students and advanced to the next level of recognition. His dedication and vocal excellence earned him a coveted spot as bass one in the All-State Honors Choir, placing him among the state's most elite high school vocalists. Malaki's success is a testament to his remarkable talent, hard work, and passion for music. His commitment to refining his craft and striving for excellence has brought great pride to our school and music department. We are incredibly proud of Malaki and all he has accomplished, and we look forward to seeing where his musical journey will take him next, and he's only a junior. So we're excited for that. But our next group that we'd like to recognize is our Business Professionals of America, and I'd like to ask our sponsor for the organization, Mr. Steve Bridges, to come forward, along with all of our students.
It's nice to be here. Usually, I can pawn this off on Dr. Kraus because I have a baseball game from one of my kids. Didn't happen today, so here I am. Business Professionals of America is a student organization that competes at the state and national levels, student technical, so business, finance, information technology. That's sort of how I got into it, with the whole programming aspect of things. So this year, we're actually going to have eight students that are going to compete at Nationals in Orlando in May. And I have one of those eight here tonight, Nooriz Ali. He's going to be competing in C-sharp programming. He also competed last year in the same event in Chicago, so this year will travel a little bit further and hopefully get some nicer weather. But yeah, I'd like to thank the board for all the support, the two administrations, Willowbrook and Addison Trail, for helping out this year. Willowbrook has helped host the state competition every year for the last, I don't know, five or six years. And then this year, we also had our regional competition at Addison Trail. And so the one great thing that I can say just about the district and the board is just how willing the administration and everything else is to help out. When I tell other schools or listen to other schools talk about their administrations, their board, there's things like that, and they ask me, you know, "What did you do to convince?" I just asked. That's all I have to do. And, you know, it's just, there was such great support, and I'm truly appreciative of everything from the administration and the board. Thank you.
Addison Trail is going to jump back in. I'm going to ask BPA sponsor, Ms. Kowalski, who is also going to present DECA. So we'll have BPA students first come up.
Hi. First, I would like to thank you guys at the board for supporting all of our clubs and letting these students have these opportunities because of your commitment to providing these meaningful opportunities beyond the classroom, our students are able to engage in experiences that help them grow as leaders and professionals. So first, I'm going to do BPA. So I am, this is my first year sponsoring BPA. I've helped judge, but since we had a retirement last year, I took over. So it was kind of a little different being on the advisor side. So first, we have Delilah Eljili and Jocelyn Macedo. Both of them earned a fifth-place finish in the economic research team. So they had to do a, it was, we were like, they said they wanted to do this competition. We're like, "Are you sure? Like, it's kind of tough." And they're like, "Yeah, yeah." So they had to write a research paper and then create a presentation and actually present it in front of a team of judges. So they did really well with that. And then another student who is not here tonight due to volleyball is Oliver Malik, and he earned fourth-place finish in interview skills. And Oliver is a sophomore. And so his was a little, there was a lot of people in the competition, so they had to do two rounds of it. So he made it to the second round. They had to create like a cover letter, resume, and then do like one-on-one interviews with the judges. So he did really well with that. Did you girls want to share anything about your experience doing?
I truly was blessed to be taking part in this event. I truly found my passion for econ this year. I took AP macro, and I absolutely fell in love with it, that it made me want to pursue and do this economic research team event with my friend Josie. And I truly feel blessed to be up here. Thank you.
I thought it was a little bit insane when she asked me to do the event with her because I know nothing about econ. I like medicine. But it was actually really fun, and I'm really thankful for our sponsors for helping us like prepare for the event, and it was not something I planned on joining at the last minute as a senior. So it was fun, it was good.
And then I did go to the DECA competition this year with the girls, and it was very, I never actually went to DECA State. So we have Kaitlyn Ford, Ava Ferry, and Natalia Lankar. And then, so Ava, Natalia, and Kaitlyn, they earned a sixth overall finish in the community giving project, which is a highly competitive, like out of a highly competitive group of students from across the state. So for their project, they had to talk about a community project that they did. So their project centered on the trunk-or-treat fundraiser that they organized right here in Addison at our school. They turned a local event into a professional-grade presentation, so they had to present what they did. So they spent countless hours doing a research project, and their efforts were a key factor in their success at state. Their leadership, attention to detail, and strong work ethic are beyond commendable. Their efforts will drive a culture that will live long past their time at Addison Trail. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the other sponsors, Leo Brazette, Nick Vilsenour, and Stacy Pacini. We just want to personally thank these students for being patient because this was all four of our first years being sponsors, so we wanted to thank them for guiding us because many of them have been in their, in the club for many years. So, and for helping us, you know, being patient and helping us through our first year as advisors. So congratulations. Do you guys want to talk about?
I wanted to say thank you to Ava and Natalia because they were a group together at DECA last year, and then they took me in this year, and DECA was infinitely more fun when I got to be a part of your team. So thank you.
Just a quick comment, because I feel like I was a part of the project because I got to provide a quote in it, but just the work that they did, not only for the DECA where they got sixth place, but overall for the actual project that they put together, just an incredible example of what those three young ladies can accomplish. So thank you.
Great. Next up is our DECA group, and I'd like to ask Laura Lopez and Liam McKenna to come forward and introduce our students that were successful at the state organization as well as continuing on to Nationals.
So we'd like to echo some of the words that have been said, but thank you to the board, the district admin, and certainly Willowbrook admin for the support of our club throughout the year. We also really appreciate this recognition of our fantastic students. It's great to have them recognized here. We'd also like to thank our students' families, some of whom are here, some are not, just for their support of our club and their faith in the syllabus and how they guide their students. So I'm going to turn over to her, sorry, something in my throat. Turn over to Ms. Lopez, she'll talk about students.
So we had, we had 25 students qualify for state this year, which was incredible. In 19 years, it's the best group I've ever had the privilege of advising. Three of the five gentlemen are here tonight. So I thought I'd change it up. I don't know if they're happy about this, but I thought I would introduce each one and let them tell you about their events. So first, I would like to honor Haroon Baye and his two partners who weren't able to make it tonight, Munee Mohammed and Mohammed Usman Navad. But they got, did a team event called Integrated Marketing Campaign Event and placed top 10. So you want to just tell them a little bit about your event?
So our event is a campaign event, which is related to pretty much like any sports or company entertainment event, and this is usually done through concerts, festivals, fairs, tournaments, like events similar to that nature. And our project was that we had a sports marketing day for Palestine to raise awareness about the current condition which is happening there, and yeah, and we got top 10 for it. Thank you.
Let me just say that his event was just planning it out, didn't actually execute it, but potentially in the future, we've talked about doing that. Next, I'd like to honor Salman Siddiqui. So he placed in two events. He placed in the Marketing Communications Service Event and then also the Business Services Operation Research Event, and he actually qualified for Nationals with the Marketing Communications Event. I forgot to mention Haroon and his partners are sophomores, and then Salman, this is his second year in DECA. Go ahead.
For my event, what we're challenged to do is promote basically an idea, a good service or experience, and that you have to be like creative with it and find like, basically like a new avenue that nobody else has seen before and just like, wow, the judge is with your ideas. And then for my second event, it's like you find the business and you, there's a problem that you research, and then you conduct interviews, research studies, anything like that to help find solutions to that problem, and then you present that in front of a judge. And for me specifically, I did the University of Chicago in clinical trials.
Last, I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to recognize Jacob Saramac. He is a senior. He's been in DECA for three years. He's also my co-president. And it's been so wonderful to work with him, and I always, it's so sad to see my seniors leave, but I'm thankful for the time I had with them. His event was Sports and Entertainment Marketing Event. If you want to tell them a little bit about it.
So for Sports and Entertainment Marketing, we're tasked with having marketing and management functions of either an amateur or a professional sporting event. So there'll be a situation that you have to present your solution for in front of a judge. And it's been a, I've been doing this event for a couple of years, and even though it's only for sports, it's helped me with a lot of communication and just creative thinking outside the box that's going to help me in my future.
That's going to be great. Picture time. Our final recognition is our, is a member of the senior class of 2025, two-time All-State gymnast, Naoma Campbell. And Mr. Andy Isaacson is here to introduce her.
I can't use the phone because I wouldn't see it. These are, these are always so bittersweet to do, especially when it's a senior, and I want to Charlie put up some stuff in here. Hopefully, everybody can see these wonderful tidbits up here. I definitely want to thank all the parents in here. I definitely want to thank all the parents in here. Introduce you to Brian and Angie Campbell. And check out these outfits if you guys could just stand up a second. This is, go, you guys stand up. But from a person that really, how about that spirit, huh? From a person that really didn't see much of their father, my hats off to all of you parents. The school can't do it without you. And I appreciate that very much as a parent as you go through the gate right here. Definitely thank Dan and Ed. Their super support right there. I think both of them must have a bunk bed somewhere in the school. They seem to be like they're 24 hours a day right there. In my 45 years of coaching, five sports here at Willbrook, this is probably the greatest athletic comeback that I've seen in my time. Naomi, in December, let's see, what was that day? Not December 7th, December 9th severely dislocated one of her fingers on a trick that we've done a million times on an even bars. Popped right out to the side perpendicular. I thought for sure that it'd come out of the knuckle. Compound fracture. She was on the cover, you'll see that in a second. She was on the cover of the National Codebook for all the judges in July. And so you really wondered where this was all going to go out right here. She put a lot right into this. She didn't do all around until late January. That's four events. And she was All-State the year before on beam and a medalist on floor. So again, going into parent mode, you're thinking, we've come so far, what's going to happen right now? You don't know what's going to happen. She focused on progress. She kept the faith. And there were times that's really all she had. You didn't know what was going to go on. It was a long road back. We knew that she could do well. And boy, did she ever do well. We came, we got to the state series. We won the all-around, qualified in almost every event in the regional, woke a few people up. The sectional, she did the same thing. Won all of the events. We got to the state finals. 9.375 on Yurchenko vault, which is a college vault, roundoff flip-flop onto a backflip. You're doing real high-level skills. Got to bars, had a little trouble on the dismount, peeled off on a double back. She was okay. Caught her. Right again, we're thinking, what's going to happen the year before? She fell off on beam. She was All-State, but she fell off on beam. She got her head straight, came to the last event, which was beam, and nailed that routine to get into the finals. In the finals, she could have settled and probably gotten fifth or sixth or fourth. Made a decision. Little yellow piece of paper at the end of January in her head that we were going to surprise everybody and do a dismount, an aerial cartwheel to a full twisting back that she'd never done before in competition. It was off in the warmups. It's the first time actually, she's so talented, you don't really, you guide her, but you don't really spot her. Her feet were a little bit off. It was the first time moved into the event, like if her feet slips off, I got to catch her. That's, again, the parent thing. Thank you for trusting us with your kids. And she nailed that dismount. And 9.525, highest score ever. And first place was 9.575. One of my friends walked up to me, Tom, and said, do you realize that 41 years ago, you had Sheila Raleigh in the same school, on the same event, second place finish on the same type of situation? And I thought how blessed I was in 41 years, not only for her, but for all those kids that have come through the gate, just like all the sponsors and coaches and teachers. How absolutely astonishing lucky that I was to do that. The icing on the cake was that she was chosen for the Illinois Gymnast of the Year. First one for Willbrook ever. We had Shawn Henderson for the guys, first one ever. And it was based off largely, Charlie doesn't have that, I don't think I sent that to him, to this letter, recommendation, in which I actually talked about the kid's character as there was a lot to talk about rather than scores and places. One of her quotes was, in the concept, I'd rather be a fountain than a drain. And I thought how important that was. And that's exactly what she was. So when you have that type of notoriety, it's often a little bit of pressure. My best memory of her, and hopefully it's something she'll take with you, is not going to be the scores of the bling, but the sense of I can, we will. I'm absolutely going to miss this girl. She was a person to be counted on. It was the greatest gift that we could possibly give her as a pseudo-parent. And I appreciate everybody, and I mean everybody, that held her up at her weakest times when she needed to be held up as a parent. My greatest wonderful thing was to see as a coach, not so much the bling. I don't watch the scores in the meets from being a high-level competitor, just to gymnastics. When I saw her dad, Brian, in the meet, in the finals, waiting in the hallway, and he turned around and looked at the crowd and went like this.
And his wife was, come on, sit down.
I thought it's got to be something really good. We're proud of you as coaches and as a district and myself personally, but most of all, I'm very, very happy for you. Very happy for you.
I was not expecting to cry. I just wanted to say I'm so lucky to have been a part of this amazing team and for my coaches who brought out my confidence. It's a privilege to have coaches who are passionate about their sport and their athletes. And that's rare in gymnastics. There's some coaches who don't really have that aspect. It might be a little bit more too serious, but I'm glad I had Coach I to support me. Because of this environment, I was able to accomplish more than I could imagine this year. It wasn't just state that was so exciting, but also qualifying to sectionals as a team. That gave me a little bit more time to compete with my teammates one last time. The most imperfect start to my season ended up being the most perfect ending. My only regret would be not joining this program until my sophomore year. I just wish there was a little bit more time. But I just want to thank Coach Isaacson, BJ, and Carly for such amazing, memorable season and amazing three years.
On behalf of the board, I want to congratulate all of our students and their coaches and the parents. This is always a fun type opportunity for us as the board to be able to recognize everyone. This is what, you know, public school, schools are about, is giving every student an opportunity to shine and to achieve in their area. We're going to take a short break and go back to the pickleball event. We have a few people that came, so we're still going to recognize them. And then we'll take a short break.
Yes, thank you. We had a couple of people who came late, and it gives me the opportunity to say that the foundation, the money used, is used for mini-grants for the teachers, which ultimately goes back to benefits the students. So with that said, we would like to honor College of DuPage. And I understand some members of the Edison U-Sports have arrived as well. They would like to come on.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to take a short 10-minute break. We do have refreshments over here. Please help yourself to them because otherwise, as board members, we have to eat them the rest of the evening. And I have given the board an opportunity to greet everyone. Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting back to order. Roll call, please.
Kane.
Here.
Poyer.
Here.
Finnegan.
Stoudt.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Yes.
Olson. Okay, at this time, it's, uh, we have a, the next agenda is petitions in here. Do we have any E-cards this evening or cards?
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to item six, on the public hearing on proposed honorable dismissal of teachers due to economic necessity or reduction in force. I'd first entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing on proposed honorable dismissal of teachers due to economic necessity, reduction in force for the 2025-2026 school year.
Okay, roll call, please.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Yes, motions approved. At this time, I declare that the meeting is open for the public hearing on the district's reduction in force for the 2025-2026 school year. Turn it over to Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Michael Baldwin.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, we are presenting to you a summary again of those changes that we've had in our staffing due to the course selections and program changes for the upcoming school year. If you recall, at the last Board of Education meeting, Ms. Segalas was able to review many of the courses that we are rolling that continuing to have this coming school year that have lower enrollment. And then the courses that do have low enrollment that we're not, we will not be offering again, I'll be offering this coming school year. So with all of that said, if you recall, I know Charlie has a slide that I'll bring up and review with the board again. This slide was at our last board meeting, kind of summarizing where the fluctuations in staffing has occurred to then give us an overall net change. And from our last meeting to this meeting, there has been some change, but it's really been more of an accounting change. We've had two things that have occurred since the last board meeting. One, we have had a, well, a decrease in the amount of literacy. If you see at Addison Trail, the literacy is 0.4. Last board meeting, it was higher. And then the special education has also changed. So what we did is just really an accounting, we had three sections or a .6 that we accounted for in special ed for reading three classes. We moved that back to literacy. So it had no impact on staffing. It's the same teacher that's teaching it. It's just a matter of accounting of where we're going to have those sections accounted for. And it originally was reflected in special ed, but it will actually be in literacy. It is a class of reading three that is for students with IEPs. So hence why this teacher is a reading teacher and a special education teacher credentialed. So it's really just more of an internal adjustment. We also had an adjustment related to our construction and math at Addison Trail. And so while we have an advanced construction classes, we are not going to run that program. It will be running over at Willowbrook this year, and it's accounted for in the staffing. But Addison Trail, we did make an adjustment within, in that. So that's how the overall FTE has changed from last time. But as you'll see, in each of the academic areas, there's either little to no change. Some have had no change, some have had a slight increase, and some have had a slight decrease. And as you take a look at both Addison Trail and Willowbrook, we see similar areas. The largest change in any one academic area was in English, and it was less than 1.0 FTE that was a change. Again, there were no restrictions on students to select the courses that they were planning on taking for this coming year. And this is kind of how it all fell out. We also noticed at District Office, at the very bottom, there's a 1.0 decrease. We have many students that are in the transition program here that will be aging out at 22. So we need one less teacher there. The good news is, we have a spot for that teacher in the building at Addison Trail. And so that teacher will be able to go. We had a volunteer that was interested in going and taking that spot. We do expect our transition program to continue to grow. As we know, the students that are in our buildings will eventually be matriculating here to the transition program at District Office. And so we anticipate that need to be coming back in a very short amount of time. So with all of those changes that I've described, we have a total FTE change of a decrease of 2.8 teachers, 2.8 FTE. We had a total decrease of, district-wide, of 57 students. We still maintained appropriate class sizes to support our students, especially in their freshman and sophomore year. And with that, we make those decisions in terms of then determining what that honorable dismissal of teachers would be. And so later on in the board meeting, we'll have a release of those teachers. The teachers that are being released are not directly related to this 2.8. We've been able to absorb that through retirements and other changes. As I said, teachers moving from one building to another based on enrollment. So many of the releases that you will see later on will be really a lot of our part-time teachers, some of our interns, some of our teacher aides, and many of them will have the opportunity to come back for part-time work if they saw are interested, apply for any of our open full-time positions, or possibly move on to another school district for a full-time position. Any questions?
Sorry. Seeing no questions, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed honorable dismissal of teachers.
I move to close the public hearing on proposed honorable dismissal of teachers due to economic necessity, reduction in force for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved, and the hearing is closed. At this time, I entertain a motion to establish the consent agenda, which are items that have been previously discussed or are routine items.
I move to establish the consent agenda.
Before, before you, I just wanted to make note, as part of the consent agenda is the revised personnel report. So at your station, we had a late resignation. It came in this weekend. So at your station, there is the one change. That's the personnel report.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to establish consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved. Next, I entertain a, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, roll call, please.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved. Next, I entertain, next we'll move on to separate actions. The first one is item A, resolution authorizing honorable dismissal of teachers. I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution for honorable dismissal of the following teachers. Steven Boise, Nidia Cabrera, Lilian Dudus, Natasha Glamosilia, I apologize, saying that wrong. Faza Guima, Daniel Hay, Alexa Jerkis, Maria Lewis, Macy Sherwood, Caitlin May, Georgine Olinsky, Amanda Rolfing, Joseph Stephens.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved. Item B can be stricken. We have no action at this time. And then we'll move on to 9C.
Is this?
Yep, 9C is the educational support personnel that we have. So this is a resolution for honorable dismissal for educational support such as our teacher aides, our interns, interns also that we have.
Okay, thank you. I move to adopt the resolution for notice and honorable dismissal of the following educational support personnel. Samantha Almeida Ortega, Lydus Bustos, Marilia de Silva, Lilian Dudus, Cecilia Feliciano, Ashley Fuentes, Eric Geiselman, Faza Guzmán, Ashley Jones, Alex Jerkis, Vedrana Capatina, Anthony Lang, Jennifer Mendoza, Jocelyn Ortiz, Macy Sherwood, Jennifer Stevens.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Kane. Yes, motions approved. Next, we have item D, the treasurer's report for February 2025.
Good evening. Presenting to the board this evening for month ending February 28th, 2025, a total balance of $67,745,368.53. We are continuing to see our money market rates trend down. We've realized about a 1% decrease in the rate over the last seven months. And I anticipate to be in the 3.5% to 4% range around this time next year. Therefore, we've been laddering out about $5 million in investments above the 4.13% rate across the next two fiscal years. Through February's report, we've approximately laddered out $4.5 million and have laddered the last $500,000, which you will see in the March report. Otherwise, this month's interest income was $199,258.91, bringing our year-to-date interest income to $2,705,645.79.
I move the Board of Education approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved. Next, we have item E, the budget status report for February 2025.
All right, for the budget, Education Fund, local revenues through February, the district has received 48.41%, or approximately $25 million of budgeted revenues, which is up slightly 0.49% over the prior year. Really no change since the March, January report. Other local revenue, up 6.24% from this time last year. No change in the CPPRT collections. We received about 2/3 of the money thus far. Investment income is still strong, according to budget, currently at 1,000, 1,734,000 collected thus far. One of the strongest areas in the budget right now is the à la carte food sales. $405,642 year-to-date, or approximately 93.25% of budget. And then finally, registration fees, textbooks, rental parking fees collected thus far year-to-date, 87.24%. In regard to state aid collections, we are currently on target with approximately $4.76 million received, or roughly 63.15%. And then for federal money, we've seen about 94.86%, or $3,226,643. In regard to the ed fund expenses, salaries are on track and trending slightly down year-over-year, about 0.73% down. Benefits are slightly up about a percent year-over-year. Contractual services are down 2.8%. Supplies are up, but still starting to trend down at 15.3% year-over-year. And then same, in similar note, capital outlay is starting to stabilize, now down 19.26% compared to this time last year. Tuition expense is slightly up, 1.03% year-over-year. In regards to the O&M fund, revenues at about 49.66%, or approximately $4 million year-to-date, slightly down year-over-year by about 1.58%. Investment income is at about 80% of their budget. And the only state revenue expected in this fund is that $50,000 school maintenance grant, which we'll expect to see in the second quarter. There is no federal revenue in the O&M fund budgeted for this year. In regards to the O&M expenses, overall year-over-year activity is about 71.8% expended, up approximately 9.78% versus the prior year. Salaries are down slightly, 1.1%, and benefits are also down 4.78%. We did see some savings here with our dependent eligibility survey we did through their co-op, in which some of the beneficiaries fell off the plan and were dropped. Utilities and purchase service expense is up 17.29% year-over-year, and supplies are up 11.91%. Again, as discussed previously, this is mostly due to unexpected repairs that we are incurring in the Buildings and Grounds Department. We did take a look at the utilities and notice there was a type on the page from the last month's report. This month's cover page is inclusive of the correct amount for the water bill. However, we still are trending about 9% higher year-over-year in our utilities. We are looking at ways to potentially reduce these costs with our Buildings and Grounds Department. Currently this year, we have converted the district office to LED lights and are starting to see some benefits there in the electricity, as well as we are looking to restart our participation in an energy shed program for the next fiscal year. For capital expenses, we are up about 37.93% year-over-year. As a reminder, these projects include the female locker replacement, the roof re-coatings, the boiler refurbishment, and the 10-year health, life, safety plan, which we've closed out majority of these. We're just wrapping up the 10-year health, life, safety plan. Moving over to the Transportation Fund, revenue of approximately $3.4 million, or 46.4% of budget, down about 9.2% compared to this time last year. With, within other local revenues, investment income of $303,098 is currently at 202% of the budget as we continue to try and rebuild this fund balance. State aid, no change. We budgeted to receive four categorical payments from the state and have received two thus far. Looking ahead to next year, we may need to scale back our expectations as to how much state reimbursement we will be receiving as there was minimal increases for the state's categorical grants in the governor's planned budget for next fiscal year. And then again, no better revenue is planned for in this fund. In regard to Transportation Fund expenditures, we had about $3.29 million and are trending down about 1.25% year-over-year. However, looking into the invoices of what we've paid, there are a couple of contractors who have continued to struggle to submit their invoices in a timely manner, even after continued outreach and reminders. I am happy to report that we were able to get all of our invoices from all the contractors in through February services this month. So the plan right now is to work with OGA and our Special Ed Department to get those invoices in. So everything is paid this week, so that way the March report is reflective and all-inclusive. And finally, the IMR Pension Fund, revenue of just over 1.2 million, or 53.48% of budget, up about 5.78% year-over-year. And then expenses, $1,344,587, or 60.54% of budget, is slightly up 1.68% over the prior year. So really no changes, still following a similar trend in terms of the hotspots with the O&M fund purchase services being a main driver of the unexpected repairs. And then, you know, monitoring the transportation account as we are looking to rebuild that fund balance as we overspent it last year and try to minimize the costs that are incurring in that fund.
I move the Board of Education approve the budget status report as presented.
Second.
Seeing none, roll call.
Taylor.
Yes.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved. Next, we'll move on to the bank depositories for 2025-2026.
All right, tonight, we are recommending for consideration that the Board of Education approve the attached list of bank depositories for the coming year, 2025-26. There are no changes for the coming year.
I move that the Board of Education approve the list of authorized bank depositories for 2025-26 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Galvin.
Yes.
Poyer.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes, motions approved. Next, we move on to IMG, the property appraisal.
We are recommending that the administration be authorized to proceed with the property appraisal through Industrial Appraisal Company in the amount of $15,920. Standard practice for audit purposes is to have a physical appraisal of property and equipment, which is updated each year for audit and insurance purposes. In addition, sound business practice suggests that a physical appraisal be performed at least every seven years to reestablish a current baseline of values. We were contacted by our business insurance cooperative, Click, that we are required to have a new onsite appraisal performed. Through Click, we are getting a 20% discount for industrial appraisal, bringing the discounted price to $15,920.
I move the Board of Education approve the appraisal of property by Industrial Appraisal Company in the amount of $15,920.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call. Seeing none, roll call.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item H, the purchase of hot water system replacement for Addison Trail.
We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the lowest responsive and responsible bid received from CW Burns in the total amount of $325,000 for the replacement of the hot water system at Addison Trail. As reviewed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we experienced a leak in the system, and due to the age of the equipment, we are making the recommendation to replace the system. Replacing the system will not only improve our efficiency and update the equipment, which is original to the building. Not included in this quote will be included in the project is the need to abate the current takes before removal, as they are wrapped in asbestos. The work is planned for this summer, as soon as school lets out. We rebid this project as we only received two bids from the last time we solicited. We were able to get another vendor to the table this time, as we received three bids this go-around. Archon has completed their vetting and scope of this project, and CW Burns bid was inclusive of all components, and this project carries a $20,000 contingency.
I move that the Board of Education approve the lowest responsive and responsible bid from CW Burns in the total amount of $325,000, which includes $20,000 for contingency for the replacement of the hot water system at Addison Trail.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Now, we have item I, the purchase of company switch for Addison Trail.
We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the lowest responsive and responsible bid received from Pace Systems in the total amount of $70,451.32 for the purchase and installation of a company switch within the Addison Trail auditorium. As reviewed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, our theater director will be hosting the all-state play this upcoming school year, and additional power needs will assist with this performance. In addition, this project was also identified in our long-range facility planning. We did rebid this project, as the last time we did it, we didn't receive any bids. Happy to report, we did receive three bids this go-around. However, we did have one bid withdrawn. Eco Lighting Services and Technology withdrew their bid as they did not complete the full scope of the project. They only had a little portion of it. Therefore, Pace System had the lowest proposal. Archon completed their vetting of that project with Pace, and their bid was inclusive of all components, and there is a general $5,000 contingency built into this project.
I move that the Board of Education approve the lowest responsive and responsible bid from Pace Systems in the amount of $70,451.32, which includes $5,000 for contingency for the purchase and installation of a company switch at Addison Trail.
Second. Is there a second? I didn't hear. Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we'll move on to the yearbook renewal.
We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the renewal for yearbook services from Justin's Inc. for the 25-26 school year, with the ability to renew for an additional year upon mutual agreement from both parties. This would be the second year of an original three-year proposal that was accepted in fiscal year '25. Justin's proposal and related documentation accepted in the '24-25 contained pricing commitments based on a 2% increase for the second year of the proposal. Justin's Inc. has been the provider of these services for a number of years, and both schools have been pleased with the services provided. Payment for yearbooks is based on student orders and sales and are not paid using district funds.
I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal for yearbook services from Justin's Inc. for the 2025-2026 school year at a rate increase of 2%.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item K for photography services renewal.
We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the renewal for photography services at Addison Trail and Willowbrook High Schools from Lifetouch for the 25-26 school year, with the ability to renew for an additional year upon mutual agreement of both parties. This will be the second year of a three-year proposal that the Board of Education approved last year. Services provided include the provision of senior portraits, underclass, and staff photos. In addition, operationally, it includes a provision of materials and services at registration and throughout the years for student ID system, including software, cameras, ID card materials, and printing equipment. The contract includes the provision of services and working with our yearbook advisors. The district will receive $6,000 from Lifetouch for the use at the buildings.
I move that the Board of Education accept the renewal for photography services at Addison Trail and Willowbrook High Schools from Lifetouch for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have the purchase of PE uniforms.
We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid for physical education uniform clothing for Addison Trail and Willowbrook High School from Will Enterprises in the total amount of $8,175.80 for the 25-26 school year. The unit prices for the shirts decreased by five cents, and the unit prices for the shorts decreased by 20 cents. The sweatpants are an optional wear for physical education classes. Bids were received from eight vendors, as noted in the attached bid summary.
I move that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Will Enterprises in the total amount of $8,175.80 for the purchase of physical education uniforms.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have combination locks.
We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid for combination locks from Anderson Lock in the amount of $10,716. This represents the purchase of 1,900 combination locks for the hallway and physical education lockers at Addison Trail and Willowbrook for the 25-26 school year. The locks are sold to the students and are required for each locker. Bids were received from six vendors, as noted in the attached bid summary.
I move that the Board of Education accept the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Anderson Lock in the amount of $10,716 for the purchase of combination locks.
Second. Okay. I was thinking about how many locks have been purchased in the 20 years I've been on the board. We could probably fill a landfill with all of them. Sorry. Roll call.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next, we have item N for the purchase of activity buses.
As our transition program continues to grow, the district sees a need for multi-function school activity bus for the program. Currently, the program utilizes charter buses from a transportation provider. The addition of an activity bus will provide greater flexibility in the transportation for the program. The program uses transportation to visit Centennial Fitness to engage in physical activity, participate in community-based instruction, where they apply classroom learning to real-world settings, and participate in small-group community outings throughout the week. The acquisition of the program will not only enhance students' access to valuable learning experiences, but also lead to significant cost savings by reducing reliance on charter transportation services. We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a 2019 multi-function school activity bus for the District ADA Transition Program in the amount of $35,000. This vehicle has been inspected by Addison Trail's Autos teacher, and the recommendation is to purchase. We are waiting for the approval of the ADA grant for this purchase. If the funds are not approved through the grant, then we will not make the purchase. As of Friday, we did get an update that the grant was approved. We are also recommending that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a 2020 Chevy, 2020 Chevy multi-function school activity bus in the amount of $55,000 for Willowbrook High School. This bus has also been inspected by Addison Trail's Autos teacher, and the recommendation is to purchase. As we begin to replenish our fleet, he has recommended that we replace the activity bus at Willowbrook High School, as it is the vehicle in most need of repairs. Currently, the activity bus can only be driven for shorter distance trips. We will be using the savings from the bus cameras to purchase this vehicle. As these are previously owned vehicles being purchased from Carriage Shell Operating Company, this purchase does not need to go through the formal public bid.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a 2019 Chevy multi-function school activity bus for the District 88 Transition Program in the amount of $35,000, and a 2020 Chevy multi-function school activity bus for Willowbrook High School in the amount of $55,000.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. Then we have item O, the overnight field trip request for Willowbrook.
Good evening. So we have a request for an overnight trip that will take place during spring break for the Willowbrook High School softball team to travel in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina to compete in the Grand Strand softball. So that's going to, again, it's all during spring break, no school, they're not missing any school.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Willowbrook High School softball team travel, to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, March 30th, 2025, through Thursday, April 3rd, 2025.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Galvin?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved. We have the information items, then move on to school recognition, and we'll start with Addison Trail this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. As we move towards spring break, we still have a lot happening, and then, of course, happening right after spring break, but we just wrapped up Physical Education Week, or PE Week. It had a Monday Health Fair that was held in the Student Commons for students to go around and visit different vendors, as well as Thursday, we had our annual, or biannual, Blood Drive, that we still have some staff who used to work with us who come back for that event. It has been around for decades now, that Blood Drive, so excited for that event to be a part of PE Week. And then, we kept it all off with Friday Superstars Assembly. We switched it up a little bit this year and moved the assembly to ATR, so the middle of the day, and the seniors were actually really excited about that. You could definitely feel the, kind of the change in energy by having the entire class there. You know, if you do it at the end of the day, some students may not stay for that time, so we switched it up, which was a really cool atmosphere, so kudos to you. That came from our principal's advisory team to make that recommendation. Last week, we also held our IHSA showcase. They did compete this weekend alongside Willowbrook. They did not make it to state this coming weekend, but they have asked to actually travel. I know Dr. Graff will talk about it, but, because Willowbrook made it to state, to support the Willowbrook team, so they'll be headed out to the school on Friday to support Willowbrook. Upcoming, or happening even this week, it's Women's History Month, and this week at Addison Trail, we're celebrating that with Spirit Week. Today was Wear Blue, so to represent women. Tomorrow is Green, as well as we have our SHE Conference. So the SHE Conference is a joint effort between Addison Trail and Willowbrook. Dr. Valari Humphrey is putting it on. We will actually have ABC News coming out to do a piece on the SHE Conference, and we will be joined by Dr. Rachel Mahmoud, who is the Illinois Teacher of the Year, who's going to go around and do a really cool activity with the students. So we'll be able to see, because of the ABC article that's coming out, but also our own coverage, so looking forward to that tomorrow at 10 o'clock. At Addison Trail, we have our Senior Assembly that's coming up on Wednesday. This is the assembly that really just kind of lays out the next 27 days. That's right, only 27 days for our seniors as of Wednesday, and there's pretty much an event every single day. When we started going through the slides, we have like 30-something slides for only 27 days, but it's to really just kind of wrap up the class of 2025 before they are presented for commencement. Spring break just around the corner, but inside of athletics, we are off and running with spring sports. Willowbrook and Addison Trail Co-op Gymnastics did place first at their regional, or I'm sorry, at the Lyden Invitational. Some winter celebrations that we've had, actually, Luke Smith, you've heard that name multiple times, as well as Isaiah Cortez, made the DH Preps All-Area Team. Luke Smith was named to the Chicago Sometimes All-Area Team, and Luke Smith has been named as the Illinois Basketball Coach Association Class Four A All-State Second Team, so pretty incredible recognitions for him. And in the athletic world as well, Valentina Pizzaferrato and Nico Duarte were named as the February Athletes of the Month, and that's it for Addison Trail.
Thank you. I'm Willowbrook.
Thanks so much. As Mr. Andrews mentioned, congratulations to the cast and crew of Things I Know to Be True, our IHSA contest play. They competed this past Saturday at Oaklawn High School. They placed first in the sectional. That means they'll be one of 12 high schools that'll be competing this Friday and Saturday. Our performance time is Friday at 9:00 PM at Richards High School, also in Oaklawn. So we'll be excited to obviously see them perform again, and then Saturday morning are the final three schools, and then the awards are announced after that. So they'll be going back over the next two days. But the cast was named as all-sectional place finishers, as well as their technical crew. It's just a tremendous event. This is the one where they build the set on the stage, so basically, there's a big box truck, and we have all these things that are packed in there. They unload it at each high school that they perform at. They put together the entire set, and they have 20 minutes total to put it together and take it down at the end, and then their performance is 40 minutes in the middle. So tremendous show. It's a tearjerker. It's a sad one, but it's a really, really good show, and they're very, very excited to be performing at state. As Mr. Andrews mentioned, our co-op boys gymnastics team continues to have great success. Congratulations to both our girls track and field team and our boys track and field team. They both placed second at the indoor conference meets, respectively, this past weekend. Junior, OJ Powell, he'll be a name that you have heard and you will continue to hear over the course of his career. Another member of the superintendent advisory team as well, is, he broke the indoor high-jump jump record that had stood since 1975 at Willowbrook High School. He is currently the number-one ranked high jumper in the state and continues to do all that he can to perform at that level. Our badminton team continues their season and, and off to a great start. Our varsity boys tennis opens up tomorrow. So does boys volleyball. Softball had victories over Eisenhower and Simeon this past week. Baseball had victories over St. Pat's and Lyden. Girls soccer with a victory over Mansuado in the Windy City Classic. So while the weather is still catching up, I'm sorry, and boys tennis opens up tomorrow as well. While the weather's still catching up with us a little bit, spring sports are definitely in full swing. Looking ahead past spring break, we'll be into testing season, so April 15th is the ACT test. I have to continue to remind myself to say ACT. So used in condition to saying SAT all these years. We'll be providing the ACT test on April 15th. That evening is also the Willowbrook Scott Talent Show. The following day after that is the freshman awards. Outstanding Student Breakfast has been moved to April 17th. So if you had it marked on in a permanent calendar somewhere for later this week, we shifted that one from March into April, April 17th. And then we're already halfway through April at that point. 27 days? That's it? Man. Wow.
Yeah. I don't like the, I mean, if you hear those numbers, it's kind of like, oh my gosh. Okay. Any board member reports? Okay. And any superintendent report? Nope. Then we'll, any public comments?
Good evening. We do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay. Then announcements, next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, April 14th, at 2025 at 7:30 PM in the District Boardroom located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. And the following Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, April 28, 2025 at 7:30 PM, District Boardroom located at District Administrative Offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. This time, I entertain a motion to move in the closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or a legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that's subject to the local government reached Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act pursuant to five Illinois Civil statutes, 120/2C1, and be collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning established schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Roll call please.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Kay.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
Bennigan.
Here.
Foer.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Galvin.
Here.
There's no action that's necessary by the closed session, therefore I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
On paper say aye.
Aye.
All pros and ayes have it and the meeting is adjourned.